Good evening, I'd like to call the order, the Woodland Park Planning Commission meeting for February twenty second. Roll call please.
Cole Middleton, here, Don Hoing, here, Larry Larson, here, Ken Kennedy, here, George Jones, here, Don DeZell, here, Vice Chair Lee Brown, here, on Zoom for the record, and Chair Ken Hartsfield.
Yes, here, please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is that I am a United States of America and a true republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on our agenda is the approval of minutes, any comments or clarifications from the January eleventh meeting minutes? Do you have anything, Lee?
Nothing from me.
Very good.
I do.
Yes, Larry?
Yes, on page four, third paragraph, last sentence, my name is Belrod. Last sentence there, CJ, go, thank you.
Blame it on AI.
You have anything else, sir? All in favor of approval? Big as I?
I.
Any opposed? Very good. Thank you, takes us to public hearings from that, we have one item on the agenda. PUD twenty twenty four, def zero one, ZDP number two oh, two four zero, one zero, one three, request by Mr. Page for a two-year extension on the, the construction of the Best Western Hotel in Gold Hill Square South, building number six. BJ, you have the presentation tonight?
Yes, sir.
As your chairman, before we begin, I just wanted to make a point of disclosure, about conflict of interest, but I've had the pleasure to know Mr. Page ever since I moved to Woodland Park and worked with him on several projects when I worked here for the city. But I made it all to make a decision and affair in a vague last matter.
Thank you, Mr. Larson, anybody have any objections, so we're continuing? Well, very good.
Thank you, Chair, I'm asked stated, this is a request for a two-year extension of the time limit to begin construction of the Best Western Hotel in Gold Hill Square South, building number six, in the planning unit development zone district. The subject property is within the Gold Hill Square South Plan Unit Development and is located northeast of the corner of Gold Hill Place and Highway twenty four, as seen here from the aerial photo. On January sixth of two thousand sixteen, the Planning Commission approved with conditions an amendment to the Gold Hill Square South PUD that allowed for a seventy-room Best Western Hotel in a redesign of building number six on one point three seven acres. On February fourth of two thousand sixteen, the City Council approved the dimensional standards for a thirty-one percent maximum building site cover, ninety-eight percent maximum impervious cover, forty-six foot maximum height, fifty-foot minimum lot frontage, and zero, uh, zero-foot front, rear, and side minimum building setbacks. As seen here on the slide, there has previously been three two-year extensions of the approvals in two thousand eighteen, twenty twenty, and twenty tw- I'm sorry, twenty eighteen, twenty twenty, and um, twenty twenty-two. The City of Woodland Park staff received a completed application on January nineteenth of this year, requesting that the PUD approval be extended for another two years. If the current extension request is approved by City Council, the approval, the approvals would be valid and construction would have to commence by February fourth of two thousand twenty-six. At this time, the proposed development continues to be consistent with the two thousand twenty-one comprehensive master plan, existing zoning regulations, and other standards. On this slide is updated renderings that the applicant submitted within the most recent application packet. Seen here on this slide is the proposed southeast elevation on top and the south elevation on the bottom of your screen. And here on this screen is the northwest aerial view that the applicant submitted. The application was referred to the entities listed here on this slide. Staff received two responses during the referral period, and the first was from the Colorado Department of Transportation. C dot stated that all future signage and utility work must be complied with C dot standards, and their full letter was within your guys' staff report. The other was from the City Engineering Department, which stated that the develop, if the, if and when the development occurs, the applicant will need to perform a new traffic drainage study. As there are no regulations to access, uh, to assets, staff does not have a position or recommendation on this extension request. If the Planning Commission finds that an extension is warranted and recommends to City Council grant the two-year extension to February fourth, two thousand twenty-six, then the approving red resolution should clearly state that the development is still subject to all conditions in dimensional standards specified within the original approved of PUD fifteen dash zero zero one in January two thousand sixteen. This concludes my presentation, and please let me know if we have any questions. We also have the applicant here tonight, if you guys have any questions for him as well.
Very good, any questions for staff?
CJ's wondering if you could just help clarify where C dot said they had no record of any of the accesses being permitted, what does that involve, and is that a potential pickup, or or is that a normal part of the process?
Yeah, so that's definitely a normal part of the development process, so, um, you know, we have a lot of conversations in this room with you guys regarding C dot access permits. Um, so anytime a development occurs, um, that's adjacent to C dot right of way, so Highway twenty-four, Highway sixty-seven, they have to receive an access permit with C dot, um, so yeah, that's directly with C dot, so they apply for that access permit and get granted or denied, so.
But thank you.
Okay, with the opportunity, if you'd like to come forward after the presentation and make comment. Name and address, please.
My name is William Page, I go by Bill, and um, I'm here representing um, Gold Hill Square South LLC, it's a um, family-owned business. My son Doug is here with me also, and um, so uh, I don't have any changes I want to make, I just want to get it extended. I wish the period of time for extensions was longer, because, you know, I come back here over two years, but at least I get to see who's sitting on planning commission. So, I'm here to answer any questions you have.
Any questions?
I would like to know what the outlook is for uh, the project. It, I, I know the last time we talked, you were waiting for economic times to be appropriate, and I just was curious if anything had changed in terms of the timeline, when you think you might start?
I, I I have a hearing impairment, and um, I'm using a temporary device, my hearing aids aren't working right now, so.
I can speak up?
Speak up and talk slower.
Okay, I'm just curious, uh, if you have any update on the timeframe when you think the project might proceed?
Well, that's a real um, wild card. You know, it depends on the uh, national economy, it depends on the lodging market, or lodging market saturation and absorption is what I'm looking at, the word, and um, uh, you know, the um, there's some new hotel facilities in Cr- Cripple Creeks that will increase traffic and so on, but also um, our market study we did back uh, when we uh, started talking about Best Western, they felt like this was an excellent site because of the um, business in the Carver Springs area for the lodging market. And um, they, you know, it's the Air Force Academy draws a lot of visitors a year, Pike's Peak draws a lot of visitors a year, and um, so the uh, and there's other facilities, and we've had some growth here in Woodland Park that, you know, a, a college is bringing people here and so on, so it's um, in the, uh, in this type of real estate development, timing is the one key element. You gotta have all your ducks lined up in a row, you gotta have financing for a new project to build, you know, there's another hotel that was approved here, I think a couple of years ago, down on twenty-four, and um, so um, you know, the, if you look at what's happened with the housing market with um, the cost of financing to build a new home has slowed the new home construction down. Well, that kind of followed, you know, and any type of new construction, so it's a um, we'd just like to get approved, so when the market conditions are all right for expansion and so on, we've got a project that's jumped through all the hurdles of getting approvals and ready to go. And that will also tie in with getting adequate financing to build a project. I can't give you a definite, it'd be a wild guess, but you know, I'm, I'm thinking it is probably five years plus or minus before it's even gonna look like it might be feasible, that's if you want my wild guess.
I think one of the factors you mentioned before, you had some existing leases on the tenants, and you couldn't proceed with construction until those tenants moved out?
Well, I've been timing new leases. I got it all tied in to, uh, you know, I've had Sherman Williams as a tenant there for thirty-some years, and, and um, they, they do five-year leases. And um, and we start talking two years before the end of their lease about extending the lease and so on. So I've kind of timed all my leases to to the five-year increments, this is where we have to build a hotel. You know, I'm leaving part of the building there, the existing tenants, but I've timed all my um, leases. I've got a new, some new tenants there that take a, um, one of them is a national company uh, that sells medical supplies uh, to not medical, uh, um, ambulance supplies, healthcare products to um, far districts, um, anybody that goes out and makes a call and, and they're renting a lot of space, I heard all the space that wasn't hardware used to occupy. And um, and it's a good business, and um, so um, I'm just trying to keep my timing of leases, so if there's an opportunity comes up, looks like the timing is right. Why, I got the opportunity to phase out some leases and but that will also depend on the economics of the new hotel project. You know, it has to be feasible to switch from a hotel project to, to um, a lodging, uh, I mean, to switch from a warehouse, I got warehouse tenants in, I got two warehouse tenants in that building. I got sheath underwear, I don't know if you know about them, but they're an interesting company. And uh, you know, they sell all over the world, and um, and their, their products are manufactured in China.
I guess the question was, will your leases prohibit you from building? When will the leases expire, so that would allow you to move forward with the construction, if that was the only issue? When will these leases expire?
Uh, the um, August, the five-year increments will be uh, in August of um, two thousand twenty-five.
Okay, thank you on that. Any other questions for Mr. Page at this time? Very good, thank you, sir. Anything else you care to say?
What?
We've answered our questions for now, are there anything else that you'd like to say?
Um, no, I um, I want to thank, thank all you gentlemen here that served on Planning Commission for donating your time, I, I, I know a lot of your backgrounds and stuff, and, and I served on the Teller County Planning Commission for five years, about forty years ago, so. Wanted to thank you for listening, and so, that's, no other comments?
All right, well, thank you, Mr. Page. That takes us to a public hearing portion of our meeting tonight, um, so, anybody on Zoom or in the audience who'd like to come forward? Any comments you'd like to make? No public comment from the audience tonight? Dave, do we have anybody on Zoom with their hands raised?
Oh, I do have, I do have a hand.
Very good, uh, you. Linda, are you there?
I am, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Great, thank you. So I, oh, I'm sorry, Linda Martin, Woodland Park.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I've attended either personally or via Zoom each time that Mr. Page has requested an extension. If you, if you accept it again, I believe you're setting a precedence for all of the other businesses who want to build in Woodland Park. And I don't know if that's a good thing right now. Mr. Page says that he's waiting to see how the economy goes. We all know that this is a presidential election year. Most likely, if the Democrats get elected into the President's office, the economy is not going to change for the better, it's going to continue its downward spiral. So, that's my two cents, I appreciate your time.
Right, thank you, Ms. Martin. Anybody else in Zoom land?
Can I just make a, a question, uh, what precedence are you referring to?
Ms. Martin, are you available?
Yes, sir.
We did have a question from the DRS, uh, which precedence, or can you elaborate on the precedence you feel is being set?
Absolutely, allowing other businesses to ask for multiple extensions or other construction companies to allow for multiple extensions.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
So, one last call, anybody else on Zoom? Like to speak, make comment?
Who's raising their hands?
Okay. Last chance. Anyone in the audience? Public hearing is now closed. Opportunity to provide rebuttal from the applicant? All right, thank you. Comments, questions to question?
I, I do, I have some questions for CJ, I think, um, CJ, so, how, how often do you get requests to extend? And, and can you, can you describe the phase that we're in as well, because I think the public should know where we really are? Yeah, as far as like, from now till development? Yeah. Okay, um, as far as your first question goes, how many times, I mean, I've been here since November of twenty uh, two, and I've re, we, I've processed three extensions, I believe, for approvals of PUDs. Um, and as far as process goes, so, they got their approvals in two thousand sixteen. Um, so, if this goes through, and you know, Mr. Page wants to build this hotel, um, starting, you know, in November of this year, he'd have to submit for a final site plan. Um, and that's all an administrative process through the planning in departments, so we route that to C dot, our engineering department. Um, and that's a onerous process, you know, we have to make sure it meets all of our engineering codes, our parking standards, our landscaping standards, and drainage erosion control, all that, all that good stuff. Um, so, once he gets that final site plan for all the construction documents, um, then he would apply to the City of Woodland Park and um, PPRBD, which is the Regional Building Department, uh, for final permits. And then, once he receives that, then he can start moving dirt and. And there, and there's still, there's still a lot of work to do, there's the C dot. The, I think, I think the point in all this is, this is not packaged and ready to go, uh, just, just yet. This is just a, in essence, he's extending Mr. Page's requi- requesting the extension of the preliminary. Right, it's, it's the um, in planning, we, in the planning department, we'd say the entitlements are there. Yeah. He can do that use, right? Um, but the nitty-gritty construction documents, engineering, planning. Right. That's all yet to be done. Right, so it's, it's a very early stage. It looks, looks good kind of thing, um, and, and any extension, and, and this is private property. So, um, what's the, what's the drawback? If, if we didn't extend, what would that mean to the applicant? Um, I'll answer what it would mean to the applicant, he would have to um, go back to the Planning Commission through a public hearing process to um, regain those entitlements. Okay, he would have to go through city first, through, through staff. Yes, sir. Then, then basically re-review everything that he's already had, and then come back for uh, approval from planning, okay? Correct. Is there a financial consideration for that? Um, yes, um, you know, with that, it'd be another PUD amendment process, and you know, with that, there are um, application fees that he would have to pay to the city. Okay. Fair, thank you for that.
So, CJ, uh, are you aware of any significant changes to our codes since this project was originally approved?
Um, in two thousand sixteen, from then to now, I'm not aware of any drawbacks as far as the approval process goes.
Is there anticipation that you'd be modifying those codes that might affect this project in the next few years?
You know, to be honest, and Karen's online, she's my safety net tonight, so, and she's way more in-depth than as you guys are, as far as the, the code updates go, so.
Okay, can we address that to you, Karen? Do you have any anticipated code modifications in the next two years?
Um, well, as you guys are aware, a lot of what we're doing uh, with the, the code review right now really is restructuring more than anything else. Um, so at this time, I'm not thinking there's anything that's going to come out of that, that's going to adversely impact this, this application. Um, if any, open to potentially uh, clean up the language around processing, but it doesn't, it shouldn't change timelines or anything like that. Um, so at, at this point, I'm not seeing anything. Um, you know, and then the other part to consider, and you guys are, are kind of tapping around it, is um, how fast is the market changing in Woodland Park, you know, what kind of demand is there? And uh, the fact that this has held pretty steady, uh, you know, for the past, I don't know, what, six, seven years? Um, you know, we've not seen real accelerated demand for changing the, the development that potentially happens at this location. So, um, at this time, you know, my, if you guys are comfortable, another two years is probably um, probably not going to sway things one way or the other.
Well, thank you, Chair.
Sure.
Chairman, I had a couple of thoughts on this.
Yes, Mr. Brown.
Yeah, I, I remember the discussion pretty well from a couple of years ago. And much of it went similar to tonight, there's not a big reason to worry about it one way or another. The owner wished to have an additional couple of years, sort of. That was fine, I think at the time, we are, we are aware of two, two leasing, other, other leasing matters. The Sherman Williams ones, which went through twenty twenty-five, and the Merritt Academy, which had, which was in a position, thought was going to be leasing for several years, and that was what the expectation.
Your volume's decreasing, it's hard to hear you, Lee.
Okay.
And you. Yeah, it's.
I'll speak up, I'm on Max here, but I'll speak up. The Merritt Academy, obviously, is no longer, um, presents a conflict from development here. But when we talked to, when we talked to the applicant two years ago, we sort of said, well, we understand you're looking for two more years, but um, when twenty twenty-four comes around, you're still going to need another two years after that because of Sherman Williams, so we, we in essence told him that he could have, that we were inclined to give four years. I think I expressed some concerns at the time, that this should not be a perpetual matter. The, after, after we go a decade with this, the citizens are entitled to reconsider again, what's a proper use and what are the.
We're losing you again, Lee.
Yeah, you're fading out.
I'm hearing the end of that comment.
Right where you said decade, it, it went away.
Okay.
A decade seems to me to be about, is a long enough time for um, the PUD change to be around, the intent of, the intent of the review for the two-year approval initially is that we're doing it for current matters. A decade later, if things change that much for the owner, things are going to change, they change that much for the city and the neighborhood and the other buildings around it, the citizens are entitled to have a new opportunity to look at, look at a proposed PUD change and decide if it fits the current circumstances. I think, given the, the discussion we had two years ago, I'm inclined to support this for another two years. I don't think I'll be here to, when it comes up again, but I would hope the commission at that time would say ten years is enough and would call and would bring an end to it, and I think it's useful for the developer to be aware of the fact that that the, that his approval he has is not perpetual. So while I can continue to support it for another two years, it's with that ca- with that caveat, that I don't believe it should be extended longer unless there's something very different than the circumstances we've seen in the last ten years, or the last eight years.
Not disagreeing, but, I mean, it gets re-reviewed every two years, there's public comment or the opportunity for it, so I think the process works.
Okay.
Let me say, the, the review we're doing now is diff- is different than the initial review, it's sort of, we're saying, is it okay to continue what was done before? It's very different to look at it, look at it from scratch, is a hotel, another, you know, another four? Another, you know, another four, six years from now, the the appropriate use there? What about the height limitation? This is a substantial increase from the normal height limitation. Is that still appropriate? What is it? Um, you know, what is this, what are the certain look at? We are not looking at those detailed questions regarding what was approved here, but we would if there was a new request had to be submitted.
Well, CJ or Karen, can you clarify? I mean, if we decided tonight that the height was. Uh, inappropriate, I'm not saying that it is, but just to promote that argument. Could we modify the PUD this evening or we'd have to decline the application?
So yeah, ultimately, you'd have to decline the application in front of you. Um, because the application in front of you is not a plan unit development amendment. Um, so ultimately, if you guys do not agree with the extension at hand, um, this is a QJ item. So you just recommend denial of the two year extension. So.
And I.
Go ahead, Karen.
I'm sorry, I was gonna say, um, and because of what was noticed, and it really is just the extension of this particular approval. Um, you do not have the ability to look at modifying uh, parameters around that past approval. It's really, you know, they've they've not. Uh, started construction over the past two years. So are you very willing to extend this for another two years? And so um, to the point of your conversation, in two years, we're potentially back here and looking at this. Uh, I think it's very, very appropriate to say, so where are your construction drawings? Where are you in the review process? Uh, do you do you have a ZDP to actually break ground on any of this? Um, you know, because over the past eight years, that's clearly not been um, the case. So that's.
Sorry, Karen, I was gonna agree with you, but with one um, caveat to that, I think. I think it's very clear that there's going to be no construction in the next two years. I mean, it, we 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 shouldn't. Um. And I and I can't obviously speak for Mr. Page, but. He's still got leases underway. You know, there's still a lot that's got to happen. So I I think to Lee's point, we are simply. Um, you know, providing a decade, if you will, of. Ex well, basically extending this uh, the entitlements for a decade and then. I I don't know what will happen after that.
So I'll make a comment. Um, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, I think my comment would just be that. Um, this isn't a decade approval. We're approving these for two years. And if we're saying, if Mr. Page has stated that it might be five years before this is built, then it's very hard for me to uh, support. The 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 agenda item this evening.
So yeah, I need to be clear. Yeah, so we, the type, the total time of the entitlement would have been basically a decade.
Right, I understand that. But Lee also made the comment of uh, based on the previous meeting.
Mm hmm.
Uh. You know, that it was approved, that it was understanding that they might do this for ten years and then that he would no longer be in support of it. Past this this next extension that we're considering this evening. Um, but if we're, you know. Based on what the applicant stated and what we're discussing is that if it's not going to get built within the next two years, then we're really um, just extending it. For no reason, that we should actually send the applicant back to submit a new proposal. And bring that forward. Um, now, why why push it down the year? You know, why push it down? Down the road to you.
So um, so my thoughts on that. Um, Mr. Page has made an investment to get this approval for this PUD amendment back when to. Have a hotel and the height of the building and all that approved. And um, so I understand him wanting to keep that investment still. Operable and live, and I I don't think that's a bad thing. I really don't see this project happening. I don't see anything that says it's about to happen. Um, so I I I really don't. Feel that I would be compelled to say um, you'll have to start over and bring it back when it becomes a real project. Um, because all we're doing, I think, is just letting his original investment carry out two more years without having to start over. If it does come about and uh. But at some point, I would assume he would just quit requesting it to be extended. He would realize I'm not going to build the hotel. At some point, I'm doing fine leasing the building as is or something else comes up. Um. But at this point, he still wants to protect the original investment of getting that approved. And I'm not thinking that's gonna hurt anybody or cause any problems for anybody if we let him keep that original investment alive for another two years. Yeah, it just, he hasn't even said there's any target date in that two year period, so it's it's not gonna do anything. For the property or anything other than just keeps his investment alive for two more years, his original expense for applying for that. PD or whatever. So. Not really objecting to his request. I don't think it's gonna bear any fruit, but it doesn't hurt us. That we're not that busy that we don't have time to put this on the agenda two years from now, it seems like so.
I I think there's two important things that the planning staff were alluded to and talked about. That are very important when we review these extensions. And one is, has the code changed significantly that requires new criteria? New requirements? And the answer to that question is no, it hasn't. And and the second question would would be, um, has the neighborhood or the area changed significantly? To say that a hotel on this site is not appropriate anymore? It's the same use that it was eight years ago. So based on those two, what I think major criteria is, is that the the. Situation has not changed significantly for us to deny the request for an extension.
And Larry, I would add to that, I would add, is it still consistent with the city plan, which it is? And is there significant disagreement among the community that it's not? So.
We have not heard that.
Right.
And and this still has to go to the city council, I presume, or does it stop here?
Oh, yeah.
No, it does go to the city council. Uh, the hearing is tentatively scheduled for Thursday, March twenty first.
Yeah. It's a significant investment in the community if he does build it here, so. That's potentially a good potential use. It's his property. I I I'm I'm okay with extending it.
Other comments from commissioners? And if we were to make a motion to approve, would that need to include the C dot comments as well as the engineering? Comments? Or is that just something for future development?
Um, that would ultimately be up to you all if you want to include that as a condition within your motion. Um, my. Personally, I think it's kind of more of a, you know, CYA from C dot in engineering, just to let the applicant know that, hey, during development process, you're gonna have to meet X, Y, Z.
And we haven't had that detail of the supplemental.
That's exactly right. So all that will come up during the construction phase or the construction document phase of the um, you know, the final site plan supplemental.
So the only condition you would propose was that all the conditions from the original.
Yep.
Proposal.
Correct. Correct.
Good point.
No discussion then, uh, I guess we look for a motion. Lee, you're not here.
He usually constructs well.
Going up the staff report, hang on. Where's your note? Um, so I make a motion that we approve the extension of the. PUD approval for another two years. That uh. We commence on February fourth or um, it would set the new end date at February fourth, twenty twenty six and uh. That it would uh. I don't see your note.
And all conditions within the original.
All conditions within the original. PUD. Would have to be uh, applied.
I'll second that motion.
Very. Uh, let's take a vote, please.
Cole Middleton? Uh, yes. Don Hoen?
Yes.
Larry Larson?
Yes.
Ken Kennedy?
Yes.
George Jones?
Yes.
Don DeZell?
Yes.
Vice Chair Lee Brown?
Yes.
Chair Ken Hartsfield?
Yes. Very unanimously. Thank you. Thank you. Congratulations, sir. Uh, next on our agenda is reports. CJ, anything to report?
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Mr. Page.
Uh, we don't have anything to report to you all. So.
Anyone have any comments or in the DIAS? If not.
I guess, uh, I I'm sorry, Chair, our next uh, hearing, uh, March fourteenth, uh, we will have items definitely on the agenda, so um, please carve that out in your calendars.
Very good.
So.
Well, it's eleven minutes after seven, meeting's adjourned.